Hello, everybody. Let's, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:30. Let's see, I'll bring you here. Here we go. I don't have my glasses, so you guys can have to bear with me. So we have a two-hour limit on this space and they're setting up for another event that will have a different configuration at the end of our meeting. So we need to try and keep this meeting to two hours. And because of that, we'll be limiting our public comments to 15 minutes for the entire public comments. Yeah, so everybody's gonna be strictly kept to the three minutes, so be concise. All right, so City Clerk, can you give us a real话?
Carter?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Gankin?
Here.
Hodgkin?
Here.
Lauren?
At home.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Newville?
Here.
Perchini?
Here.
Fredo? Seedorf? Taylor? Orr?
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor will be joining us shortly, and I would like to move to excuse Councilmember Seedorf.
Thanks. Then a personal motion. Any discussion at all? Home favorite?
I'm in.
Compose.
And I would like to excuse Councilmember Fredo.
Thank you. Home favorite?
I'm in.
Compose.
Oh, there he is.
They're rolling into orange. All right. I realized just now that we have flags on our screens here, so could you join me in a pleasurable way?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its equality for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I am not that we improve tonight's agenda.
Then move to the next thing during the discussion. No? Home favorite?
I have.
Okay. Then approved. All right, so now we're gonna go into public comments and please keep them, be sure and state your name and your ward or address or city if you're not from this area and keep your minute, yeah, there's a clock right over there, so when it goes, that's the end of your time today.
No pressure.
Mayor Orr, welcome and City Councilmembers, welcome. My name is Carly Shiffrer. I'm the president here at Grace Harbor College, and I just wanted to welcome all of you tonight to our facility and to our campus, and I'm just really happy that we were able to collaborate on your meeting tonight and the locations. So just wanted to say hello and welcome. And we are building out a community education and community enrichment program that will be starting to take off this summer, so I just look forward to our engagement and how we can partner to really blend a college and the community together. So please bring your ideas forward. Happy to hear from you and just really pleased that you're here tonight. So thank you for having us. Thank you for letting us host you. Sorry. It's been a long day. I'm not with a bunch of happy left in my system, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. What is a beautiful campus. It's very, I mean, it's changed a bunch in years since I was here. All right, next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, everyone else that's here. I did send some emails to the mayor and to my representatives, Norm Pline, Ward Three, and obviously with three minutes, it's really hard to get into nuts and bolts and meat potatoes. I'm against raising the water subsidy for EM, whatever it is, the EMT on our water bill, sewer bill by that much money. I just think we're already at a $27 base, and I believe you're asking for another 20 something dollars on top of that in one month. And then going forward, that'll adjust every year. Is that my understanding?
We're not, we're not really supposed to comment during this.
All right, well, it's, it's a bad thing. I think a lot of people are struggling to put food on the table, you know, pay, pay for all the other things they need to pay for for their families, seniors, retirees, which I count myself in, even though I'm partially employed over at the courthouse. But I, I really think it's a bad idea. Look for other options. I did throw a few out there. Another one is to renegotiate with, if it's AMR or whoever it is, why does it have to be that number? Because Hoquiem instituted the same thing, and now their water bill and sewer is over 400 every two months. They don't do a monthly, they do by. My son lives in Hoquiem. It's 420 every two months just for water and sewer. Bad idea, and they're struggling, all right? And I can't imagine Hoquiem is having fun with that. They're probably regretting passing that. I know a lot of people in Hoquiem came to their meetings and said the same thing, and somehow magically they passed it anyway. So please don't do it. I, I still have a minute. I thought I was out of time. Try to rush. But yeah, try to use that minimum. I, I don't mind inflationary, you know, 1% to 10%, somewhere in that area, since inflation has been crazy the last three years. But adding that much money that fast to people that don't get any, you know, if they got social security, you're getting 1%, 2% ish every year. All right, those of you that are on SS know what I'm talking about. And if AMR doesn't want to play ball, look for other companies. Okay, there are other ambulance companies, there's other EMT services. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm saying the cost for this plan, the way it sits, is outrageous. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Councilmembers Seedorf and Taylor arrived at 6:34.
Thank you. You're up.
Good evening. My name is John Vincent. I am a member of the IFF Local 315. I'm also a homeowner and Ward Five, and I am here talking about supporting tonight's resolution regarding the ambulance utility rate. It's been shown multiple times that we need to invest more in our emergency services. It's very clear. One of our most recent examples is a for the department to come to a third-party firm to complete a visibility study in 2018. The study described our fire department as unstable because of lacking in proper funding. After reviewing the material provided regarding the ambulance utility fee that has been provided by the council, which is from an outside firm also, it has become very apparent to me that the best choice for the city would be to select a full-cost recovery or full or partial cost recovery. The full and partial cost recovery will help allocate funds and emergency services and not rely so heavily on the general fund. These two options would better help the general fund and allocate for money to be spent in other areas such as the Parks Department and Public Works. The city budget needs improvement, and that improvement starts with passing tonight's ambulance utility rate increase. All services can continue with proper funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Mackey, Borderline, Ward Four, Ward Five. I just have a question about expenses. When there's a call for an ambulance, usually a fire truck follows that ambulance or EMT or make a car. I was wondering, is that a necessity? Is that mandated? If it wasn't, you could cut some expenses there. It happens quite often. For one reason or another, the, a fire engine follows the ambulance to the call. The other thing is if these rates and this timeframe is not mandated, maybe the rates could be cut in half and extended for longer than five years. Is that a possibility? Because right now we have higher gas taxes imposed by the state, property taxes are up, inflation is terrible. People are caught in a pinch. So if there was a way to still get the money, but over maybe a longer period of time, maybe that'd be a consideration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Mark, the board. I stand in favor of the, the rate increase for the firefighters and ambulance drivers. As a working person who doesn't even have money for a lot paid for Starbucks, I will find that money to do it. Even if it's $420 a month, I don't care, or two months, I don't care. The services that they've provided my daughter and that they've provided for me over the years has been phenomenal. And competing with outside, like Olympia wages and Tacoma wages, we can't have our good guys and ladies leave in our area willy-nilly because they can't even afford to live here. So again, I stand in favor of it.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, Hannah Sfido, Osorio, Realty One Group, and Anytime Fitness. Live outside of Hoquam towards ocean shores within the county of Grace Harbor. So at the last few meetings, I've been taking notes and thinking of some questions that I might have that maybe other people in the community who are not, you know, speaking out about what their needs and wants are, even though we're all friends and family with these people and everybody has concerns and everybody wants to talk about it, but a lot of people can't make it here, but I'm happy to see that there are a lot of people here. So regarding the North Shore levy and the folks that are gonna be displaced, if it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done. I'm not saying that, but are we gonna relocate longtime residents and set up a levy where people can camp? Because that would be pretty unsightly and upsetting. Also, the homeless shelter committee meetings, I'm finding out, were closed to the public, which was a bummer because I wasn't able to get there to check that out and to get involved in that aspect of our community, which is big and serious. So do you guys have property management? I'll just make a statement. I'm concerned that maybe there is not efficient property management to take care of these people and their rights as tenants or receivers of community assistance, or however that's gonna work and the location again, I'm not really sure what's happening, if it's gonna be next to the school juvenile correctional facility. I think those judges coming in and speaking about what actually happens over there was very insightful, and it's really lit a fire under me to educate fellow citizens. I think that there is an issue that a multitude of citizens are having the same problems that we speak about at these council meetings. And if we saw the numbers that are affected, there would be too many to fill this room. So this is a very serious matter, and everybody has a lot of responsibilities to, to take care of here. So closing the meetings, I'd like to hear more about that and maybe kicking some people off the board that probably should be on it for a fair and critical inspection of what's actually gonna happen out there once we purchase the land and start development. I think a healthy discussion has opposition. The end.
Thank you.
If time for one more, Mr. Mayor?
Just, okay, here, I'm thinking.
It would have been.
So I have been to every single council's meeting this year, and I have noticed there hasn't been a single one where people have loaded on cutting costs to the citizens. It's always been adding more and more and more. And I don't understand why there's the general fund and nobody is looking at the bigger expenses that are in the general fund that could be cut so that you guys aren't harming all your citizens that are barely making it as it is. There are some pretty hefty things that could be reevaluated significantly in the general fund, and nobody's even attempting that. Instead, we're, once again, hanging on your citizens. And I think that should be looked a little more into before we start jumping these sort of guns. Thank you.
All right.
Do you mind if I, oh yeah, go ahead, just take a minute to your time. I'm from South France, say, Ward Five, I'm downstairs at the Wishka Cafe, uh, cooking pizzas. Uh, but I also wanted to bring up that my cleanups were contacted. By our NameSync. The city, uh, city council over there knows of the cleanups I do. And they are doing an international cleanup Aberdeen on June, June twentieth. Oh, I just wanted to bring that up, let you guys know. I, I'll probably put Ruth about it personally. Thank you. Alright, have a good day.
Alright, thank you, Josh. Uh, let's see here, okay. Okay, public comments, let's go back to consent agenda with Council President Morrison.
I'm looking for tonight's consent agenda, the fifth minutes from May eighth meeting, Council's table and payroll. Second.
Then motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
How did I finish?
Close. Motion passed. Okay. Let's put on to the mayor's report. I just got a couple of things right here. First off, um, I, I, um. Would like to spend a minute of my time or a couple of seconds anyway, if everybody could just. Uh, be quiet for, for a minute so that we could recognize. Uh, the driver of the bus that, uh, the transit bus that crashed, uh, just a few hours ago. Um, if you just be quiet for a couple of seconds or a minute so we can, um, think about him. Alright, thank you. Yeah. So I. I wanted to, um. Quickly acknowledge, uh, let's see. Mister Daniel Patterson. He, um, is in charge of the Aberdeen Marching Band and they just were up in Canada, seeing Victoria and they. They were in a parade up there, their, uh, Victoria Days Parade. And they won, uh, the best marching band from the United States. I, I think that's a wonderful thing and some of us should all be really proud and those kids work really hard and hear them all the time. And then I had one other quick thing, uh, I wanted to recognize since. I don't have my glasses on, so I hope I say this right. Uh, Kaylee Pendergrass has been awarded the Dan Blanche Weather Wax Memorial Scholarship by Grace Harbor. Community Foundation. Wanted to, um. Acknowledge her as being a wonderful student here at Grace Harbor College and, and we're proud of her as well. Alright, thank you. Uh, alright, let's move on. To council reports. Are there any council members that have reports tonight? Yep, alright, thank you guys. Uh, next we'll go to staff reports with administrator permits.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um. We met with a couple, are we met with one, um. Thank you. You hear me now?
Yeah.
Alright, we met with one, um. Elevator bidder who put in, they're a, a company that put in a bid for the elevator replacement. Um, they inspected the elevator to see if they could include, um, a motor room on, on the roof. Um, it doesn't look like we'll be able to do that, so we may stick with the old hydraulic system. Um, so they're throwing around those, so that, that was one of the considerations that we're moving when it comes to the replacement of the elevator. Um, I met with the friends of the library today to give them some information. It was the first time I met with them. Um, to talk about the remodel that's happening and to update them on, um, city business. As well, uh, they had a lot of questions, uh, revolving around, um, the different projects that the city has going on. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I met with the Funnel Nation, um, to kind of, to give them information on the village that the city had proposed building. To the, to the, uh, county commissioners. Um. We also on the tenth had, um, public service recognition week. Um, there was a good turnout by staff. Uh, we had, um, a barbecue that was put on by Public Works, so I'd like to thank all of them for doing that. Um, and we spent the week kind of sharing, um, why we came into public service.
Thanks. I just want to interrupt and say that the pork was delicious, that barbecue, if anybody didn't get it, they missed out and the beans were award-winning.
Um, and then, um, today we met with, um. Uh, Tynica Watford, being the CEO of the Moore Bank Group to talk about, um. Permanent housing in, um, Aberdeen and what that currently looks like. And what it could look like and if there is any potential for apartment city to bring more permanent housing, um, to the city. So, um, are there any questions?
Awesome.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Oh, go ahead. Director Ryan.
Thank you. I have a couple of items on the agenda. Uh, I wanted to go over why those are on the agenda tonight. We have the request, uh, to allow me to begin discussions with the Funnel Indian Nation regarding the possibility for. Artwork in the Market Street Roundabout. This report was brought to you as a council so that I would know, are you interested? In roundabout art? This is another option since we did not receive the community foundation funding. The mayor and the arts commission are interested in having me continue to pursue, pursue other options so that we could. Still have roundabout art, uh, in the market street roundabout. Uh, the other item I have on the agenda is an easement extension for Garlic Park. The school district owns the property known as Garlic Park. The city had a forty-year easement and then we've been extending the easement. Um, this is the fifth time. For two-year periods, the school district is interested in a potential land swap in the future. That's the reason for the shorter-term easement extension, uh, because we will hopefully own the property in the future. Were there any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Director Sanger.
Yeah, um, I, I put together a committee report and your agenda packet for a discussion item regarding removing fluoride. Uh, this, uh, began from a council member approaching me and asking me what the process was, so. The first step was, this, there's a, there's law that states what the rules are. The first step was to have a presentation on, from the Department of Health. Where they, uh, outline the benefits and supposedly the cons of, of, of fluoride. We had that, uh, a couple of council meetings ago. Um, after that, after we have that meeting, we have to decide. Whether or not we're gonna, you guys have to decide whether or not you're gonna direct staff time to do the outreach. So the next step by law is that we do an outreach by mail. TV if it's possible, radio, leaflets, on the website, direct mailings. To everybody that we can reach that is affected. And we do that ninety days before you guys take a vote. So there's a lot of effort by staff to put this all out, so. What we're doing today is this, this discussion is. You guys have an opportunity to, to talk about whether or not there's support for removing fluoride. If there is support. Then during the public works section of, of the council meeting, somebody can bring, uh, uh, bring a motion forward that. You direct staff. To dedicate the time to put together the outreach program for a vote in ninety, ninety days after for removing fluoride.
Director Sanger, there would be, um, a public hearing as part of that process, correct?
Um. I don't know, I don't think so, but, um, there absolutely could be, we could, uh, it, you know, even if it's not required, we can have a public hearing.
Seems a good way to gauge if you're gonna do all that outreach via mail or radio or whatever, to have. That time where people can come and talk about it so that we can get their feedback accordingly.
Yeah, there was no, there was no, um, nothing in the law that stated we had to have a public hearing, but. Reasonable would, you know, it's reasonable to think that that would be the way to do it, uh, get the information out and then also give. People an opportunity to speak on the record. Um, I think that's what it is, is, is they want. Everybody to be aware, they don't want anybody to be unaware of what's, what the possibilities are.
At the very least, maybe we could put like a survey thing out there.
I do that. Those are, those were pretty easy. I talked to Ruth, she said that that was something that we could do. Um, so yeah, I mean, the outreach is gonna be extensive, so, um, yeah, this is. Uh, but you know, staff is, I'm directing my staff. To, if you're a pro or con, to keep it to yourself. This is not our decision, this is your decision and, and the citizen's decision, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Isn't, so that, that depends on if the council decides to, from this vote tonight, if they would like to move forward with more investigation, they're just.
Right. So, so tonight during public works session, um, somebody can make a motion that they direct staff. Time to the outreach for a future vote on removal of fluoride. And if there's support by the council. Um, then we will do that.
Director Sanger, do you, um, could you estimate how much staff time would be involved in it?
Um. Twenty hours, twenty hours of my time. Um, and then admin time, there's, I mean, it's not huge, putting together graphics and, and. Uh, the, the big thing for me is. This is not, this is not my. Fight. I'm not a pro or con guy. I, all I have to do is put out that we're considering removing fluoride, that's the outreach. So putting it, getting it off into all the different social services and things like that. In fact, there probably less than my time and I'll probably have admin to it, so, um, but there is, you know, what we don't want to do is, if there's not support for it. We don't want to go through this, if there, through the outreach, if, if the council is not even gonna be close to having a vote on it and supporting it.
And would staff time be charged to the water budget?
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and there will be mailers and the mailers can cost several thousand dollars as well. Depending on how many mailers we're obligated to send out. And then if we have to advertise it on the radio, I did a paper, that would be an additional cost as well.
Uh, question for Director Sanger, do you know about how much? We spend to add fluoride to our water system?
Uh, I don't believe it's much. I think it's about. Twenty thousand, five thousand a year. Um, the, the investment was in the equipment. To put the fluoride in the water. So, and that's, we have that equipment and that was just recently upgraded when our, we changed our coronation and. So, um, yeah, the, the initial, it's the infrastructure that is expensive, not, not the fluoride.
Any other comments? Nope. Alright, thank you, Director. Any other directors? Okay, let's, um. Let's see, open that floor to Mr. Seedor from the finance department.
Thank you, Mayor Warren. Uh, we have a resolution tonight, uh, for updating the fees and charges. For the city's ambulance and emergency services utility as allowed in AMC thirteen dot eighty dot zero nine zero. And thirteen dot eighty dot one one zero. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Then motion has been made and seconded, um, is there any discussions?
One clarification, this is for option two, correct? Which is the middle option, not the, you know, or the doubling to make it. Uh, fully funded. And not no charge, this is kind of like what adding about fourteen or fifteen dollars a month, is that right?
It's like eighteen dollars, I don't want to say.
Too late?
I'm not sure.
She go over.
So, uh, so it is, uh, I'll talk loud. Uh, yeah, so it's not the full one, which would be almost a thirty dollar, that's what option one was.
Right.
Option two is that middle of the road, which is. Give or take seventeen dollars.
Okay, thank you. I got something to say, um, to that. So why are we voting, um, on option two when we didn't even vote if we wanted option one, option two, or option three? Uh, because I know that there are a lot of other people that prefer option three as it has the least impact on the community.
One thing that's important to note is that we defer this at all. We're looking at a larger spike than we do eventually in Greece.
That doesn't answer my question though, why are we voting on two when we didn't even vote if we wanted option one, two, or three?
We conducted a workshop with all of you and asked the, the director, we asked for directive of what options you would like us to bring forward and we clarified that. So that's, that can come out of a workshop, how the group wants us to direct our work.
Yeah, one council member said, oh, it's the option two, but clearly he didn't even remember that we were here to vote for option two. So that to me seems pretty flaky, right, especially on something that impacts so many people.
I think he was clarifying it just because it doesn't say it in the, um, in the, in the, in the write-up, so.
Okay, but then again, so why are we forced to vote on this option two?
It's because I asked for a directive of like, what would you like us to bring forward?
Yeah, okay, and one person said option two, and then I said, well, there are other people that like option three, so why are they not both here?
That's me.
For the, you know. So I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit. It was the, looking at through the, uh, the workshop, the last workshop is, there was one vocal for option two, one vocal for option. Three. Uh, I took away from the entire conversation. Uh, option two was what was kind of the flavor. You know, we could make a vote, if you will, at the workshop because it's a workshop. So we brought option two after clarifying that of our understanding that was the general flavor, if you will, of. The conversation that was being had. So that is what's being brought forward, forward consideration at this point.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that. Um, don't get me wrong, I want you guys to give your money and obviously thank you and appreciate. I mean, as a citizen here, I've had to call emergency services, uh, over twenty times. And it's been a horrible experience every time, not because of anything, I'm not going there on that right now. I'm just stating, it seems that we're so concerned about this general fund, maybe we should really look at and see where money's. Where else money is going that we could not be sending money there and. Take care of our emergency medical services. Just throw that out there.
Yeah, I completely feel what council member Carter said, this is a, a repudiation of our. Staff, our EMS and fire. A couple of years ago, my husband had an incident, anybody, and. They brought him back. My husband would not be here without our EMS. Um, they do an amazing job every single day and I cannot thank them enough. Um. But we also have to look out for. Our vulnerable citizens and I cannot tell you in the council bills, I've sent several emails to you all from citizens that reached out. Um. Over the last couple of days, um, widows, uh, single moms. Um, and this is going to be very punitive for them. Eighteen dollars might not sound like a lot to you or I, but when you're on a fixed income and social security, that eighteen dollars is not there. Um, I think it's easier and I know it's not, it's an easy task, I'm not trying to minimize it, but I think. Looking at other ways to find savings in our general fund is easier on our end than trying to ask. Someone that's on social security disability or social security. Or a single mom that's working two or three jobs and barely making ends meet and has to choose which bills to pay. It's easier for us to figure out where to make the savings than it is to provide them.
Thank you, Captain Seedor.
Uh, first I want to clarify for council member Carter. I got caught in traffic coming back into town from being out of town all day, so I missed the finance committee meeting. So I wanted to make sure it was clear because it wasn't stated actually here under this resolution. Option two, I wanted to make sure I understood clearly what was discussed. If. While we're bringing up there, both is option two out of the three options. If you don't like option two, vote against it. If the majority of the council votes against it, then, uh, another council member can make a motion. To either approve option three or option one. Uh, it's a very simple, straightforward Robert's Rules of Order. Right now, the motion is on the floor. It's for option two. I empathize. I empathize with people who this is going to be more financial constraint burden. Times are tough and things just costs just keep going up, but we can't keep kicking the can down the road like we've done with other things where all they're going to do is get more and more expensive later. Um, for the citizen who is concerned that we're not cutting anything from the general fund, a big difference. Last year, we looked at the budget very carefully. We cut quite a lot. In fact, if I recall correctly, in council, excuse me, City Administrator Clemens could remind me, maybe I know it was like at least a million or a million and a half.
It's over a million.
It is over a million dollars. We're still looking at a budget deficit of around three million dollars and this rate increase is going to help give the burden property to where it belongs to the EMS utility rather than having it subsidized out of the general fund, which is going to take, you know, at least save us eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, correct? And out of the general fund. So that helps us towards that general fund savings or cutting back on the deficit by close to a million dollars. Um, I hate to raise taxes. I don't think anybody here or anybody in government really likes to raise any kind of fees or taxes. But we have a fiduciary responsibility as a governing body of this city. And we need to start really looking at things. And I know that even with this passing, if it does, there's still going to be cuts and police and fire take up the majority of our general fund money. Uh, quite a lot. And so if we don't pass this through, even if we pass it through, we're still likely going to be looking at cuts. And most likely, a lot of that, the majority of that is going to come somewhere from the police and fire. And I know I ran on a platform and promised my citizens that my number one priority was police and fire, public safety. And I will not vote to cut back on police and fire services. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Bellack.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, for the past three mayors, Aberdeen has been running a deficit budget. But initially, we were bailed out by the money we got from the insurance settlement when the armory building broke down. Um, we dipped into that to help pay for things. Um, but we continue to run a deficit budget, which is just not responsible. Then we got ARCA funds and that saved our bacon one more time. We don't have anything that we can dip into to the tune of three million or so dollars to get us to a balanced budget. And, um, I agree with Councilmember Seedorf. We are elected to make some hard decisions and guide the city to a fiscal, responsible budget. And yes, it's going to be, we're all going to be tightening our belts in one way or another. Um, and I think it's important to, um, to reiterate that this is something that was it was a decision that last year City Council was looking at. And then the RSA came up and we postponed it then. Um. We've got to get the revenues to keep our EMS sustainable without supplementing from the general fund. Um, because we don't have the general fund revenues to do that and and keep everything going um, at the rates that our citizens would like to see their services provided to them. Um, you've got to pay for those services. I I listened to Dave Ramsey and, um, it was a couple of weeks ago. He's, he's really big on not, not borrowing money and, um, paying down your debt quickly as you can. And he said, the worst thing you can do is nothing. Um, the best thing you can do is maybe the wrong decision, but it's better than not doing anything. Because you're making steps, whether it's baby, baby steps or not, to attack this deficit. And I think, um, I would really like to see us support our EMS folks and bypassing option two, which prolongs the increase. Um. I guess that's all I have to say right now.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkin has got her hand up for some time.
Yeah, yeah, she's the next one.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, um, to Riley's question. Um, I felt like in voting on this tonight, if you're not in favor of raising anything, you're going to vote no. Um, if you're in favor of doing something, you'll vote yes. Um, I don't think any of us want to go with option A, which was the thirty dollar increase, our forty dollar increase, something astronomical. So, um, it just comes down to a matter of deciding whether or not we want to burden our, our taxpayers, you know, a little bit more when things have gotten so expensive and people are on such a limited amount of money. And, um, we do seem to be foolish with money sometimes, um, and that's something to consider. So that's my only thought.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Taylor. Councilperson Taylor. Thank you, Director.
So I've heard a couple of times that if we don't pass it now, it'll cost more later. Own it. If so, if we pass it now, we still are going to raise it next year too, right?
Not as much.
Not, not right, not as much, but it would still be the same amount.
If you could.
And it's split into two.
Yeah, the city right now is subsidizing the, um, the taxpayer.
Right.
And we need to get out of that realm. So.
Either way.
Option number two, at least does it slowly as opposed to if it was me, as much as I hate paying taxes, I'd raise it completely up to number one.
By next year, though, it would be.
It won't be by next year.
By next year, it'll be what it would be cost up to. No, so if you go with option two, it tracks definitely than what option one or option three does. They're all independent of each other. They do all increase from year to year, but it's not that if you go with option two, then year two, it goes all the way up to what option three would be. They still maintain that roughly fifty percent give or take, uh, general fund subsidy that we're leaving with today. So while it does still track, it's not that huge jump, where the huge jump isn't, isn't the initial year one for all of them. And then as you go through the next couple of years, they increment go up a few dollars each year, uh, based on assumptions of increased cost. So if we postpone it, if hypothetically, if it was postponed until next year to make a, a decision on it, why would it cost more? If if we held on. It'll, it'll cost more because your costs are going to be more next year. Right. That, I mean, but that's what I'm saying. So either way, the cost next year is going to be more. Yeah. It's going to cost them a lot now. And it's going to.
Yeah.
We don't, putting it now.
If we don't go with number two, then, then, um, we're going to be cutting. If we went with number three, our cuts to all the other departments are going to be more extensive this year because we are making cuts. We, we, we're three million dollars over. So we, and then to get some of that back, there's going to be cuts. And if we go with option number three, there are going to be larger cuts to other departments.
And and the way that the rate is set up is so that we don't reach that top tier at, at year five. It incrementally increases it over time so that people can just, we don't just go straight because going straight to that top tier actually would bring us, that that's where we really should be, but this incrementally builds us to that point. So that's, that's how the rate, that's how rates structures are. We can, yeah, so that, that's how, that's how they set that up.
Councilman Seedorf. I guess it's in giving a green light. Well, it's green. You would think green, there you go. You would think green going to go and maybe it's.
The proposal, as we had, um, the fire chief had outlined in prior presentations to the council was option two does not increase it to the point where we're fully funding EMS at the rate it should be funded at based on the recent rate study that, the updated rate study that was done. But it would gradually increase it over a five-year period of time. So we're, we're, and we're using, um, our reserve balances uh, to bring our reserve balance down to a level that it really should be at. Somehow a reserve balance that, you know, we, it clarified, I guess we can't use that EMS reserve balance or anything but EMS.
Right.
Yeah, but, but this way, rather than using the entire reserve right away or, um, bringing the rates up to where EMS is fully funded and then continuing to have that extra reserve balance above the norm that would be needed, we're going to, we're recommending option two. There is an increase, but then we're going to eat into those reserve funds for the next five years as the rate slowly starts to inch up. Uh, but it won't get up to that level of what option one is, is my understanding.
Director Sander. Are you going to say something?
Well, uh, so. It's on. I can't hear myself. Just to clarify just a little bit, what Councilman Seedorf was saying is just the use of our EMS reserves that we have today is that these rates, all three models do use EMS reserves or EMS expenses systematically over this five-year period to buy them down, if you will, to an acceptable level. They are too high at this point uh, for reserve balance rules. We should be lower than, way lower than what the graph. So we're able to use these reserves that frankly, a lot of it came from COVID money, uh, looking at the numbers. Uh, using that now to keep the rate lower. Without those reserves being used, you would see even higher rates. So, you know, we're, we're using what we have to try to maintain as much stability as we can.
Thank you. Councilperson, uh, Parchini.
Okay, I mean, this is, this is a really tough decision. Um, if we don't approve number two, then we will have to make cuts in our EMS, in our fire, um, in different areas. That, that's a fact. That's something. I hear everybody saying, you know, they like the standards that we live by now, but I don't want to pay anything extra. And I understand that too. I, I have listened to, like, the people at the leisure manner that, um, Council President Morrison brought to talk about their rents and, and how everything was so much that they, they may not even have a place to live next year. Um, can I add eighteen dollars to their, their water bill? But also, can I take away the EMT services that they have now because it will be different if we don't approve it? Um, I don't, it feels like there's no way to win. Um. But that, that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Councilperson Dink.
I would just like to see what we have just slightly altered. Like, I have a huge concern with the sixteen percent that goes to the homeless and drug addicts of town that we don't, they're not taxable people and that we shouldn't, like, don't feel we should be putting the bill for that. Like, see, these sixteen to twenty percent come from grants. And if I saw the twenty percent come from grants, I do want to approve the rest. It's just a matter of, we have money from opioid settlement. I'd like to know if it can be used towards it to help curb this yearly debt we have. That I don't feel like the, we, the citizens who are already struggling to even putting all this at once. I'd like to see it come in a smaller, I would say. But when, when does it come to effect? To June first, September, August?
Yeah, we, we push it to August.
But it was, it was June.
It was, was July initially is what we were thinking, but we pushed it to August, just based on the, the length of time that we, we've made that into this discussion. Uh, just, I'd like to speak to grants. Is, I am a big fan of grants. We put in form as we see them that, you know, there's grants that we fit into for things that we need, uh, but they're for projects and items. You know, they're not really great to grant for sustained operations. Um, and, and again, it's, it's more of a, we want to buy a piece of equipment that, you know, we'd love to have, but we can't afford it. So, well, let's look for a grant, you know, we're doing that right now with a couple of items. So, uh, while I, I love the idea of grants and we do what we can with them, they're very hard to, to use from a sustained operation viewpoint. They're just, yeah.
I just want to make one more point before we vote. Um, we talk a lot about building um, and the land they're up around here. And this is going to significantly impact renters too, because the landlords cannot be expected to eat the same things all on their own for every single unit that they have. So that's going to deeply impact the people that can least support us. So it's just something to keep in mind.
I guarantee you that if you want to raise the brand, if it's on a toilet, raise, they're going to give them a nice round of number. They'll pay you. Go ahead.
It worked this time. Um, so me, all I, what I keep hearing though is, is it's, it's going to keep going up over time. It may be small increments, but that person has to make a decision between can I get my medicine this month? Or am I going to pay my, my water bill or the EMS thing? You know, that, it's a tough choice. My, my grandparents were put into that choice several times. They lived in open and, and with the rate, with the increases and everything, I mean, my grandparent, I can choose. Am I going to take my medicine or am I going to be able to pay this? You know, I, it's a tough choice for people to be put into and it's a tough decision. And those who are living up on the hill with, oh, I got this money. I'm okay. I can afford this. There's people living down here over in South Avenue where I live that can't afford it. They can't afford twenty dollars. It may not seem like a lot to people, but it is. It is when it comes to you choosing whether you have to pay for your medications, whether you're going to be able to eat. You know, for some people, it's a lot of tape. For other people, it's heart medicine. That's a big decision. And I mean, to be able to just sit there and go, it'll just go up a little bit this time and then next year it'll go up a little bit, then next year it'll go up a little bit, then next year it'll go up a little bit. Where does it end? That, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. We can.
I want to request to roll with all of this one.
Thank you.
Carter?
Babe.
Ellis?
Yes.
Gakin? Hodgkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
No.
Mackey?
No.
Morrison?
No.
Newville?
Yes.
Parchini?
No.
Fredo?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. Trying to get this to work again. No.
Push and fail, seven to five, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, let's go on to, uh, Public Safety Chairman, uh, Chairperson Hodgins.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go live in the Public Safety Department for Chair Hodgkin this evening. Um, we have no items on the agenda tonight. Walter's been provided pretty rundown. Um, so we'll start with the Aberdeen Police Department. Um, activity report, thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty calls total so far this year, up from twelve thousand ninety-three at the time last year. A total of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six of those calls are from actual traffic stops. We are still in the background with one police officer candidate with four vacancies. We have physical, discussing oral words on the next week, the police officer candidates. Moving on to the Fire Department, recently the Aberdeen Fire Department partnered with local groups to provide an overdose awareness class. This class was taught at Aberdeen High School and covered the. This class was taught at Aberdeen High School and covered the dangers of fentanyl and how to reverse the effects of an overdose using Narcan. Aberdeen Fire Department employees taught Harvard High School students CPR. Students in the Harvard High School health class completed a week-long training that covered adult, child, and infant CPR at birth age. Uh, fire service specialist activity. Uh, Mitch Howson has been very busy again. He has completed forty-seven public contacts, ten home visits, five referrals for proper care, and six business inspections. Um, and they're stopping update. One firefighter paramedic will be starting on June fourth. One firefighter paramedic is completing the pre-employment process. And this leaves the department with one vacancy remaining to attempt to fill it. And that's Public Safety.
We do have the third reading.
Okay. Um, tonight we have the third reading and final passage of Bill twenty-four oh one and ordinance adopted in the twenty twenty-one International Building of Firecoats. I have a little bit about this thing.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion? Any men, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Carter.
Uh, you.
Ellis.
Yes.
Gaken.
Yes.
Pachkin.
I can hear myself, sorry. I don't want you to have to hear background noise, yes.
Thank you. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Newville.
Yes.
Perchin.
Yes.
Fredo.
Yes.
Councilmember Cedar has exited the meeting. And Taylor.
Yes.
Ordinance passes eleven to zero, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, zero, eight.
Okay, I know that's actually from Public Safety, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Public Works, uh, Chair Lauren.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, public hearing, this is a date set for a public hearing on proposed revised and extended six-year transportation improvement plan for the years twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. I move that we open this public hearing.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Done, okay, public, uh, session is now open. Probably open through comments, is that? Okay, are there any comments on this specific? Director Sanders.
One item, Sydney, you, you sent me an email today. That item is absolutely a, a tip project and it shouldn't be on our tip. I, we missed it. So if you want to make a motion to add that to the tip, then we can come back. I, so we're having a meeting next week. Is that true, Chris?
I'm sorry.
Are we having the meeting next week? And, I mean, council meeting next week?
Yes, I haven't heard.
Okay, okay, so it's all for having a meeting next week? We can do it next week or we can, uh, approve it as amended if you want to add that project. But I'm all in favor of that project that you suggested.
And like you said, like, this is the public hearing. So when that item comes up, we make that.
Okay, is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment, uh, limit to three minutes? Any men?
Well, seeing none, I move that we close public hearing.
Second. Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Real quick, I'd like to make a motion to further the investigation of the removal of fluoride.
Second.
Is there incoming comment?
Yeah, I, I, I guess we're need to at least, um, give the public an opportunity to weigh up. I mean, always, I know that there's a cost to it, but, you know, we send out mailers every month anyway in the water bill and there's a cost to that. And I just, I, I think I'd go with our principle to keep the public in the loop and, and give them a choice.
Okay.
Thank you.
I reached out to as many dentists in the area as I could. I wanted them to know that council was considering this. And I think I missed one dentist. Um, all the dentists, um, that I spoke with would, um, really like to see the city keep fluor, the fluoridation of our water. That it's absolutely essential for, um, dental health for young kids. And, um, there were two letters that were, um, sent in from two dentists who, um, discussed the, the likelihood that there are some new alternatives to fluoride coming down the pipeline, but they're not here yet. And so potentially, we, we don't go in, we don't pursue removing fluoride at this point, but we wait for the technology to, um, to be there. But it still offers solutions for strong teeth, but, um, different from fluoride. So I would prefer that staff focus on the work at hand and not be distracted by, um, putting this up for public comment at this time.
Thank you, is there any more comment?
Mr. Mayor, um, I hate to trouble you again, could I request a roll of all down this one, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Carter.
Babe.
Ellis.
No.
Gaken.
Yes.
Pachkin.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Newville.
Yes.
Perchin.
Yes.
Fredo.
No.
Edor. Taylor.
Yes.
Passes, passes nine to two in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so just to make sure that was in favor of removing.
In favor of continuing the search and public outreach.
Okay, till another day, okay.
So I believe now I want to make a flip of time to read a bigger motion to amend the transportation improvement plan. Let's make the motion to approve that, can you say any more? Okay, thank you. Eva first, Ed.
Next, the resolution adopting the revised and extended six-year transportation improvement plan for the years twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion?
I would like to make an amendment to this transportation improvement plan to include repairs to F Street specifically in front of Zalasco Park.
Okay.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion on? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so it passes and they're.
Amendment passes, now we need another motion to approve as amended.
Okay, amendment passes, now we need another motion to approve as amended.
So move second.
In second, is there any more discussion? And call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? She passes, her resolution passes as amended.
This will be a resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Okay, moving on to resolution declaring an emergency and waiving competitive bidding requirements for the station number four horse main replacement project. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passed this.
It'll be a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Thank you.
Third reading and final passage of Bill twenty-four dash zero two and ordinance amending AMC thirteen dot six zero dot zero one zero to create a new rate for irrigation system water consumption. I move that we adopt this third and final passage.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, uh, to approve the third and final passage of Bill twenty-four dash zero two ordinance amending AMC thirteen point six zero like, zero one zero to create a new rate for irrigation system water consumption. We need a roll call, vote, vote, please.
Carter.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Gaken.
Yes.
Pachkin.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Hear me.
We got them.
Mackey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Newville.
Yes.
Perchin.
Yes.
Fredo.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes eleven to zero, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, zero, nine.
Thank you very much. Let's go now to special agenda items, Council President Morrison.
Hey, our first report is a request from the Parks Board and Parks Director recommending that the city council request the mayor to sign Fifth Amendment to easement for use of parcel number zero one four six zero zero eight zero zero nine zero one, Carly Park for the term end date of June thirty of twenty twenty-six. I move that we adopt this report.
Second. Then moved in second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We approve, we approve that. It carries, thank you.
Um, we have a request from the Parks Director requesting that the city council authorize Parks Director to set up a meeting with the Quinol Indian Nation to discuss the potential partnership for artwork to be placed in the Market Street Roundabout. And we have this report.
Second. Been moved in seconded, uh, is there any discussion on this report?
Yes, I just want to clarify that I will be voting no on this and that is not because I am against artwork. And it is not anything against the Quinol Indian Nation. I just, for safety reasons, want to see that roundabout stay clear. Um, so I will be voting no on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Councilperson.
Um, I haven't seen any of the, any proposed artwork.
There isn't.
There is none. When, once there is something selected, will it come back to council and go back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and also, uh, just a quick comment that, um, uh, the state kind of likes having stuff in the middle.
Will there be any public comment on that? Yeah, we'll talk to you.
We can't talk back to you though. Yeah. Both are gonna say, oh yeah, so the state does want something in the middle. There is a problem with people at times driving through the center of traffic circles and the state does prefer to have something in there to keep people, to keep cars from driving through the center. But that's not your idea, I'm just kidding. Okay, you're welcome. Director Sanders.
My, uh, my speaker's not working now, but, uh, the design criteria does call for, uh, something in the middle, whether it be artwork or trees, whether, because it's to break up the sightlines, so you're not getting the the headlights coming from the other side and you're focusing on merging traffic and not traffic straight ahead. Just, there's a whole bunch of design criteria out there and it all says.
Yeah.
Be a big debate, I just wanted to maintain consistency because I, I personally don't think that it's a big problem, but thank you.
Up here. Um, we were approached informally by members or, um, by members of the Quinol Indian Nation and had expressed interest because of their proximity with the Qmart, um, to the roundabout circle. I believe that the Chehalis tribe has roundabout artwork that, and so they wanted to provide something similar to the city of Aberdeen. Um, and this would be something as we approached the Quinol Nation that we're requesting that they pay for it if they're interested in something. So this would come from any of the city's coffers.
And they would also know that it is, it is up to the council to vote on a yes or a no with the artwork. That's true. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we, motion passes.
Okay, and last one, we have a request from the mayor to allow him to execute the MOU with the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport, expressing support in their efforts to restore the Lady Washington by obtaining a capital heritage grant. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Been moved in seconded, is there any discussion on that? Any men, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passing. Okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, public comments remembered from.
We're about four minutes ahead of schedule.
Four minutes ahead of schedule, here you go. So we're going back to, uh, public comments, if anybody has any, please let them to three minutes. Uh, before you start also, this would be a time when you use public comments, sir.
Thank you. Steve England, word four. I'm probably gonna piss some people off that I haven't already pissed off. But you say that there, there needs to be some drastic cuts. Oh, you feel really bad about having to raise the rates on citizens. Well, maybe feel bad about maybe starting at the top, cutting some director's pays. There's quite a few people for the city that makes over six figures. Uh, most people in Aberdeen don't even make that much. Um, I know, I'm one of the ones that live up on the hill, but, uh, I, I'm not, you know, that wealthy. Um, I've had to pay a lot of medical expenses lately. Um, and a lot of things happening in life. And I, I personally can't afford a rate, a rate hike. Um, but if you guys want to really save money, maybe take a look at cutting from the top down. Don't cut the bottom working guy, the, the one that does everything, you know, um, that, that's not a good thing. And, um, you're talking about, oh, don't want to take money away from the general fund. Well, I hear you all talking about wanting to buy that property that jumps the city with some of the money from the general fund. Maybe you can just, you know, hold up on that, times are tough right now. We have to try to save money, otherwise we're gonna end up like cosmopolis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No, no.
Jamie Jenkins, word four. And I'm curious what the city's doing about economic development planning. Because if you're working with economic development in mind, you're attracting businesses that are gonna pay more taxes and feed into that three million dollar deficit. So I know we have right of Grace Harbor, which is focused on the whole county, which isn't fair to each city, right? So what is the city doing economic development wise within the city?
Yeah, I can give that, okay.
Hi, Anna Sajio, sorry, again. I need to come here to complain about things, you know, I'm not a big complainer, but, uh, just listening to kind of what's happening and where people are standing, and there's no Toastmasters in town, so I'm, I'm practicing my public speaking. So we do have an opioid, fentanyl epidemic, in case anyone hasn't noticed. And wouldn't we have more resources for emergency services for its taxpaying citizens if we weren't responding to drug overdoses? And like exponential numbers from last month, I don't remember what it was from the month before, but I noticed that those numbers have been going up and that must be a hardship on our emergency services. It's wild to me that, um, we're having to give these classes to kids. I think it's great, teach them first aid, teach them CPR, but if you're teaching them to carry Narcan around, that's wild to me. Um, we're in a big bad situation. A, a question that maybe other people might ask themselves, who owns or who brings in the funds for that free foam tent that posts up in Walmart on the regular? They're paying free phone bills for people and why are they coming here? It's because we're providing a ton of resources for them. And I don't know if that's the city or if it's the state or if it's federal government. It's probably all three. Um, why? Who's giving these resources to make Aberdeen a homeless hub? You know, those are the questions we need to be asking. As far as the fluoride, I think naturopaths might have. As far as the fluoride, I think naturopaths might have a different outlook on that, and those are medical doctors that maybe have a less traditional way of looking at health and wellness and maybe don't abide by whatever the oh, I'm not even gonna say that. Um that's, that's all. The economic development question was really, really smart because we have the crime and the the illness, the blatant mental illness and physical illness in our streets. Why would people wanna come here to bring their businesses and when they're leaving? So that's all.
Thank you. More public comment? And for the, oh, goodness, sorry.
Of course, um Les Bolton, word four. Um you guys have a really difficult job and we, I mean, sitting out there really difficult decision. EMS is, I mean, when I hit nine one one, I want somebody to show up. And it's essential. And right now, there's a small reserve fund. And the cost is going to increase because the cost of fuel is increasing, because the cost of equipment is increasing, because the cost of drugs are increasing, because wages are increasing, benefits are increasing. All those things are increasing. Say again? So, so what I, what I wanted to say was that um you know, you guys have some really difficult decisions to make. I'm a, I'm a taxpayer and I feel it when you hit me really hard. And it's tough when you raise taxes by seventeen bucks, but seventeen bucks, you know, I can manage. And maybe some people can, and I get that. But how are you gonna feel when they slap you with thirty seven dollars because they've used the fund out and now instead of subsidizing it, there's no more money to subsidize it? So do we shut down uh the Southside Firehouse? Do we lay off a bunch of firefighters? Do we cut out the planning department? Do we I mean, those are difficult decisions that you have to make. And I guess um try to be surgical. You know, not rant things up rather than put it off and put it off because that's, this city is famous for putting it off. They put it off and put it off and put it off until they walk into a stone wall and then it's impossible. But it's, you know, that slow incline is, is how you're gonna get there. So anyway, thank you all for the really difficult job that you have. And good luck with the three million dollar deficit. I mean, I, I seriously mean that. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Or the family?
Does anybody have numbers for the amount of uh reimbursement for the ambulance calls? How much are reimbursed? Fifty percent? Ten percent?
I can talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. Uh when Community Hospital was having a hardship year, several years ago, they lobbied the legislature and the federal government to get a higher rate of pay for Medicaid patients. And now they seem to be doing much better. I was wondering if the ambulance service could lobby to get more per patient on Medicare from the state or from the federal government. Um that's a possibility. It's a lot of hard work, but citizens don't want it, want to pay. Maybe government agency would be able to step in and help pay. So anyway, thoughts?
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, see, now I'll close the public, oh, hold on. Oh, okay, I closed the public comment and that now uh a good word, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um I would like to propose that we spend some time um discussing a workable solution um to addressing the EMS disparity at our next um council meeting. Is that something that the council members would, would support? Maybe. Can I give a second?
I second that is.
There's been a motion that made to continue the EMS discussion at our next council meeting. Is that what it is? All right, is there any discussion on that?
I have a, just a question.
Yeah, hold on, go ahead.
Is that going to be uh just like a general discussion during a council meeting? Are you thinking like a workshop type setting? Just so I know how to prepare for it for you.
I think a workshop setting would be most helpful so that we can look at nuts and bolts and um various scenarios.
So this, this would be at our next work, the, the council workshop or other than the council meeting?
Yeah, can we have a workshop within our meeting, regular meeting? No. What would council members like to do? Have a workshop next week?
It's a regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting next week. Right?
You can have a discussion during that meeting and you can discuss items.
Well, let's have a discussion next week and see what we can come up with and um meanwhile, for for everyone who voted no, if you could um come up with a scenario that would work for you, that we can do. Right now, I suggested that before, bring back functions, right? Um that was palatable to, to that's both of us for most part, the voters now. And I wonder if there might be a little ground between two and three. Certainly subsequently been discussed. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, do not make a motion for that or any.
Withdraw your motion.
Pardon?
There is a motion open on the table, so we need to.
Any more discussion on that?
Draw it if we're not voting.
I'll withdraw the motion and um if that could be on our agenda for next week as a discussion item, that would be great.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? So then um Council President Morris?
Okay, so we are going to move into the executive session pursuant to RCW forty two dot three oh dot one zero subsection I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matter relating to agency enforcement action. Or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation with the agency. The governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. That will be, go into a second segment.
Next. Second, move the second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're, we can move it down all?
Now I can.
Go into executive session in the room next door. For twenty minutes.
We'll be back here in twenty minutes. Good things. There was a motion made to reconvene. Easy discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're back in session now. If somebody wants to make a motion, then we leave.
I move to a vote.
I can say this. Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys.